People die out of taste. Scots are police. Patrol. It's every day.
Right now, Charlie. We'd be great. We're not. It's me. Yeah. Yeah. Who knows who's in there? No, that's true. Who knows who's in there? I was like, where are you into whatever?
Uh. You know, I'm still working there. We just have a couple kids. I think that you're a while. Well, now, I thought that was. Oh, we said something about school.
Do you intend on that? Some sort of test? He is a construction. If they see those guys around. Any fees in the street? I don't know. Case you're less. And then, we have American way. Cheers. That'd be good. See him.
I haven't learned on the volunteer yet.
Just city work.
No, absolutely. City work. You have to say. My class people there. It's the same time.
I used to go from.
But it's like, hey, you should say.
I think it's been a deal, but I'm not sure they know. Anyone? You rest your head.
Best one, man. Coffee time's for you.
We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Manny, would you take a roll call, please?
Matt Otty.
Here.
Bob Richard.
Here.
Robert Peterson.
Fred.
Kent Miller.
Here.
Rick Brown.
Yep.
Tony Gignler.
Here.
Lloyd Latrell.
Present.
Thank you. I'll bring to your attention that we have revised the agenda this evening under staff reports, the citizen surveys, and then on discussion items, John Brummer with Trek Design with some of the water options. That's one of the changes. If you would now stand for the implication.
Father, we thank you for this wonderful weather that we're having and the great prospects that we have for crops in our area that will benefit our growers and our community. And we want to be with our law enforcement and also be with our servicemen as a service and keep us protected for here and abroad. Be with us as we conduct the business of our city. Let us make the proper decisions that benefits our community the most. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Katie, do you have anything at this time?
Nope, I sure don't.
Okay, thank you. Heather, would you?
Sure.
Come up and share with us about your LMI survey?
My LMI.
Our.
Our LMI survey. And I also have Nicole McDaniel, she's from NCRPC, if she wouldn't mind joining me because she knows a lot more about this than I do. This has to do with what we talked about at the last meeting about the possibility of applying for the CDBG water project. We've done a little bit more research on that. The application, we won't even know for sure what the application looks like for the CDBG project until probably. In the April, in the April last week. So, we have a little time to even know what that looks like. But here's a few things about applying for that. We would have to fill out a low to moderate income survey. We haven't done anything like that here since the fire station is the last time we did that. The benefits of doing a low to moderate income survey would be that we'd be able to apply for things that come up. The survey will probably be good for at least 10 years, so pretty close to that. It's good until the next census comes out. If it's anything like the last one, it took a little while, so we would hope it'd be good for about 10 years. It would allow us, if we qualify, it would allow us to fill out applications for other projects that we just can't do right now because we haven't completed the survey. It'll be a little difficult to do, but Nicole's an expert on it, and she's done many communities. So, there are some things that we would have to look at. The staff here in the office would be used heavily to do it. It's probably not something that we would send out with our utility bills. We would like to send it out separate. I worked today a little bit with Shelley and Mandy to kind of come up with some ideas. It is something that has to be coded so that we, well, not us, we don't look at that, but NCRPC, Northside Regional Planning Commission, then matches that up so that we know we don't have false surveys or too many, or that we've missed people. I have a copy of what it would look like, but I didn't make copies because this is just a sample. This isn't what it's really going to look like, and I was afraid for them to get out. But I can pass it around anymore than more than to look at it so you have an idea. Because the last one we did was in.
I think it was.
Oh, was it? Okay, good.
I got something like that.
Okay, good. All right, good. Ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, I think is the last one that we did. So, that's the last one. This is kind of what it looks like, I guess, if you can see them. You guys can see what it looks like.
Oh, yeah.
And you can see at the top where it shows that it has to be coded. And then those will all be, the way that we think we'll send them out, that the girls will send them out from the office, the staff will hear, is an envelope inside an envelope. So, you know, they'd open it up, there'd be a cover letter that explains what it is, there'd be a copy of the survey, then there'd be a folded or another envelope inside of it, and then they fill out the survey and send it back, and it actually goes directly to NCRPC. So, we don't see that. They'll tally that for us. We have to have 51% low to moderate income is what our target would have to be to show that we have a need to do it. It does not just include the people in the city either. It would be people that are on city utilities, that are outside city limits, plus rural water district one would also be included in that survey because they are beneficiaries of the water, the city of the white, for reasons for them, so.
We met, Heather and I, and Mandy met with, and Katie met with the regional planning last week and discussed this because we talked about the week before that we needed to pursue this at the last meeting, so we're kind of starting to work our way through. So, I thought was kind of the consensus of the council that we keep this moving forward and then we get that upgrade. It's like she said, it's going to take a lot of work, but it'll benefit us a lot moving forward at this time of year if you get the council to have any opposition.
Well, you do, you send this survey out in our billing.
We're not going to send it in the billing because they have better results if they're not in with the utility bill, and they get returned better if they're sent separately.
Okay.
And then there'll be certain populations that'll be a little more labor intensive. You know, somewhere that we really make sure that we want to get the surveys back from would be the technical school, HESI Tech, so I'm working a little bit with them to find the best possible way to get that. And that will have to be done pretty quickly because those guys get out pretty soon to do their spring, whatever, their internships or whatever. So, I'm working up there to make sure that we get those guys surveyed.
Any questions, please? Okay, let's continue on.
Perfect.
Move with that. We'll back up here a little bit, and thank you for coming down.
Thank you, sir.
Rick, do you have anything you want to comment about this?
No.
Bob? Tony?
I just want to thank Ronnie and Mike for their help in giving us last week or two here.
Bob, do you have anything?
No, not yet. No, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the council meeting for February 26th and the special meeting for February the 24th, appropriations 3A.
I'll make the move.
It's been moved by Council Peterson. We adopt the consent agenda for February 16th, February 24th, and appropriations 3A.
Mr. and Mrs. Brown. Subsek. Any comments?
Second by Councilman Latrell.
Manny, would you take a roll call, though?
Brown.
Yep.
Gignler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Otty.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Latrell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the hiring of an interim city administrator. And if, I think everybody got their Jay's resume. We interviewed him last week, Katie and I did. Very nice gentleman. He was last at Greensburg. He served there twice as an interim manager, and he's retired, and this is all he does now is interim work. And I think he likes working with the budgets and employees. I think those are all looking fine, and will give us some pretty good leadership, is what I took away from him. Katie, you have some comments on Jay?
Yeah. He said that he would come on Monday mornings, probably Friday afternoons, so he would be here, somebody in the office all week. He's also particularly interested in, I think he used the word, he enjoys personnel, and that's something that I'm hoping to get done in the next few months, is a new personnel policy manual, so I was excited to hear that because he's done that several places. He's, as I said, been all over, really, but less in Greensburg. And with what we've got going for potential projects, he's worked with a lot of those government agencies, so I think that would be beneficial as well. Because obviously Greensburg has run a gamut as far as government assistance goes, so.
Have you heard of him? No, he's not here.
But he can start, right? When we talked to him, he said he'd start first of the month, so he's available, highway to get started. And I think this will help us kind of keep some of the projects we have moving on track and keep working our way through.
I'd make a motion to be hired Jay Newton as our interim city administrator.
There's the motion that made by Councilman Miller that we hire Jay as our, Newton as our assistant, or excuse me, interim city administrator. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Otty. Any discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. I think you guys will enjoy working with Jay. He has a really good personality, and I spent a few hours with him in our interview and then showing him our community, and he was, he really was impressed with what we had going and what we've done and the direction that we're on for a community ourselves.
Now, there is no, shall we say, contract with him? I mean, I guess, I mean, it's just a weekly paycheck is what we're dealing with. I mean, there's no term limit or enough.
No, that'll go in the minutes as that, you know, so, you know, at any time, he could, of course, you know, choose to walk away, or we could as well.
Without any repercussions of any kind on any.
Yep, yep.
So, we're not, you know, once we get somebody on board, you.
Right, but I didn't know whether there was any.
Contract.
Yeah, I mean, we guarantee six months' wages or any such thing as that.
As we use him, and then when he's done, we're done.
Yep.
While we're on this, and I don't, I know his salary's considerably higher than he claims, have we considered salary for whoever we're looking for? They're going to depend on their experience. He's always got a lot of experience.
Yeah, we haven't yet, and I figure, once we decide on who we're going to get, then we can be deciding some of those things because if we're going to let the new council decide who they want to, who they want to hire, we'll probably all let them in on what they want to do on a day.
That's why I'd.
That's my opinion.
So, when I read the proposals, was that's part of the proposals, too, is to calculate?
Yeah.
To a conversation.
Yeah, we'll eventually, we'll eventually have to come up with a number and put in there. We'll do that as a council. Next item on the agenda is the KMEA voting delegates, and recommend that we appoint Ronnie Spoor leader as director and number one voting delegate, and Manny Milbers as director number two of the KMEA board. Any questions, discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
It's a move.
It's moved by Councilman Brown. They appoint Ronnie Spoor leader as director number one voting delegate, and form in Manny Milbers director number two voting of the KMEA board director.
I'd take a vote.
Second by Council Peterson. Any further discussion? I don't have to until next year.
Is this two-year appointment or one year?
They stagger. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, two. It's, I think it's two. Two years and the other one's one year, looks like.
One was two and one was one.
Yeah, but since Glenn left, we have to do two new ones, so.
Oh, I think.
Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Next item on the agenda this evening is the KMGA voting delegates. And nominating Ron Spoor leader and Manny Milbers. Ron is the, and Manny is the alternate voting delegate. Any questions? It's moved by Council Gignler that we appoint Ronnie Spoor leader and Manny Milbers to the KMGA board directors. Manny, got a second? Second by Councilman Otty. Any discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along.
It's a move.
Go to adjournment. By Councilman Brown, have a second?
Yeah.
By Councilman Otty. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? We're adjourned. We'll go into the work section. Katie, do you have anything?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have John Brummer with Trek Design. Thanks for joining us again this evening.
Thanks for having me here. We thought it'd be appropriate to give you guys an update on the water study, kind of wherever you've been, what you found out, where we're going, when you're going to get the report.
Finding only is in the water. I mean, finding what.
Yeah, it is, but, I mean, we've actually made some progress with the existing plan. Kind of, you know, just make modifications for the short term to improve things, and we have made some improvements. I don't know if people have noticed or said anything, but we've had a couple of taste and odor events during our testing period. We made some chemical changes, and actually, by all accounts, we didn't have a lot of complaints, but I don't live here anymore, so I don't know if that's your experience or not, but that's, we were able to keep the levels down going out of the plant, so.
Your dad didn't mention anything?
No. Nobody told me, and I said, "You still working on that thing?" But we really wanted to get through a whole, all the seasonal variations in water quality, so that's why it's taken this amount of time because you can really make an informed decision if you do it that way. When it's cold, it's hard to treat water, and when it's springtime, you get a lot of stuff washing into the water. So, you want to capture all those contaminants and things you're going to be dealing with in the future, so not just, you know, one little snapshot in time. So, that's what we've been doing. Like I said, in taste and odor issues, we did see a couple of events, but I don't think they were as severe as a couple of years ago, so I can't be totally definitive on what would happen, but we're getting ready to go into the next cycle, usually in the spring is when you see the taste and odor events, so. I was here, oh, a few months ago, kind of going through the options. Does really have a change. I don't know what we're going to do now. I got one more round of sampling to do and a treatability analysis on this last kind of cold weather event, and then we're going to fit together our formal options. We'll go to actual manufacturers with the desired treatment scheme for a new plant versus a rehabbed plant, you know, whether it's water taken from the lake, and that's probably going to be the highest price option, so. Anyway, you'll have a whole list and a list of options that you can make an informed decision on. You'll see advantages, disadvantages of each, and I'm hoping that'll be done within the next 45 days, so. And you'll have in your hands a report that you guys can dissect, and then come back. If you have any questions, we can go over those, too. But we'll also in there put not just the cost of the project, but what the impact is to the rate payers based on different financing options. Maybe go rural development or, you know, just keep in mind that kind of extends the process out of free money, free money, so.
Yeah, that's why we're kind of working on our LMI project.
Yeah.
Start working in that direction, move this project forward.
Yeah, I think it's important. This is probably my nearest and dearest to my heart, or project I'm working on, so I hope it does go to fruition. And they're going to have to, they're going to make, we're going to keep making the regulations more stringent, they're going to have to keep dealing with it. The whole plant, you know, if you don't do anything, that's not the best option. You have to something, rehab build plant, and be thinking about when you're going to build a new one. And then on top of that, you're going to need to be thinking about where is it going to go, and that'll be in the report, too, how much land you need, and it's probably going to make most sense to be near where the existing plant is. And those things we'll talk about and discuss. In the meantime, anybody has any concerns or input or questions or anything, be happy to.
Do you have any, any idea about, every quarter we keep getting these letters, we just got a letter from the last bill about high levels and stuff?
That, that is something we are actively working on right now with the existing plan. We're trying to come up with a way to deal with that, so we're not, just to, like I said, just to get us by for a while. We don't want anybody to force our hand, say, "Now, you have to do something, you have to do it in this timeframe." So, what we've done is we're presenting an option to the state to address that, and it's, it entails moving point of chlorine application downstream so it doesn't have as much time in contact with organics in the water. Gives the plant the ability to take out the organics before you add the chlorine. Chlorine organics creates this triolone thing, and a little elevated level makes you have to put a letter out, and people don't like to do that. People get desensitized to it after a while, too.
Well, in the letter, it says, "It's not that bad at short term," or something like that, "but if you're long term, it's cancer risk."
Yeah.
And we've been getting these every quarter, and people are coming up to me, and they're saying, "Hey, are you giving me cancer, or are you going to do something about this?"
Yeah.
But doesn't the state require that if this occurred back three quarters ago, that you still have to come out with that letter for a certain period of time?
No, it's each incident. And, well, if we get to the end of the year and the annual average is over, then we're going to have to write another letter.
Right.
Yeah. So, but we're actively dealing with that. We've actually got the proposal into the state, and we're looking at it. And it doesn't take much to do, we're just, you know, just takes moving the chlorine from here to here, and then we'll see what happens, and there's other things we can do, too.
Do you got to get permission to do that, or can you just do it?
Can't just do it. You got to ensure that you're getting an adequate disinfection, and you got to show them the calculations, and they have to buy off on it.
Is Katie, she, working with you, pretty good on this?
Well, the trouble is, they want to focus on what's been done in the past instead of what we're looking at for the future, so I really didn't calculate this right back then. It's, well, okay, I'll change that, but it doesn't affect what we're doing, you know, going forward. It's, I didn't bang them ahead a little bit, but I know what they want, I want to do to change it, so. But we're pushing, we're being aggressive about it at the same time, so they don't just sit on it. Kind of, for the next letter, for the next sampling period, every quarter you have to sample for them, so, in two locations, so we're going to try to make sure we get it implemented before that, see if it works.
Well, this is a project, I think we really want to keep moving forward and just not back off of it, and we're kind of like you, it's near and dear to us, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's our water, and we want to give them the best quality that we can.
Yeah, fresh squeezed water, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll report to your next president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, good to see you.
Next item on is the city administrator search proposal. Katie, do you want to address this?
Um, yeah. Last time you had the lead's search proposal, and I had said that I contacted a couple of private firms, so I believe you received what they had sent. I did request that they come here and think, if we're just getting into this, but Austin Peters is a firm out of Colorado and Kansas City. It's two sisters, two twin sisters, actually, is what I found out. They had worked with Smith County, was how I had come across them. They actually had worked with Smith County on a personnel policy and wage study, and then I found out they also do professional recruitment, so I got information on both issues. They, as you can see, are kind of the mid-level price range. The Novak Consulting Group is who Baldwin City actually used to hire when they hired Glenn. As you can see, they are the price here, but they did provide, and it looks like they haven't worked in Kansas as much, whereas Austin Peters is kind of all over in Kansas. So, those were just kind of some things that they had sent, and of course, we have a lead, and, you know, I'm not familiar with necessarily good or bad as far as the lead. It's just that this is certainly not something that they specialize in, so your discounted rate is probably because this isn't something they do a lot of, but it is a service that the lead offers to cities, so. In addition, just kind of jumping down in the agenda, I also included the Austin Peters information on their personnel policy rewrite. That is something I would definitely recommend. I think it's well within our budget to spend that. It is something that we need. Hasn't been updated in 15 years. As I stated, Mr. Newton said that he, this is something he enjoys doing, would certainly be, and he has worked with Austin Peters before, and I think between the two of them and myself and the council here, that that's something we really need to work on, and I don't want that to be a five, 10-year project like the code. I want it done quickly. And they have all that professional and up-to-date knowledge on federal laws and all those types of things that I certainly don't have, so.
Yeah. Is this indicative of the performance that they're going to give us, that nobody ever shows up to our meeting to explain what their performance are?
Well, I'm sure they would have come had I, had I asked, that I had, well, the lead, you know what happened there, who thought they were coming, and then they wanted it here by phone. Austin Peters, I didn't, I didn't ask them to drive off for this. If this is something that we want to consider, you know, they'd be out here right away, but it's, I didn't want them to come out and then, so I don't know where you want to go with that, but yeah, the lead, we're seeing a good feeling there from the lead representative.
Where can we go from?
I would like to entertain bringing the Austin Peters group out, and we can fill two versions of them, talk about our policy rewrite, and then our recruitment of a city administrator.
Yeah, and as you can see, they listed several services. I don't know that we necessarily need all of those as far as the personnel, but there's just a lot of things with personnel that needed to rest, and they, they do that, and then. And then, then when I found out, they also do the professional recruitment. And like Tom said, that would be, their names are, I don't think they're on there. Becky, Becky's who I've been communicating with the most. Anyway, they'd be from Overland Park or from Fort Collins. I can see, you can see the list of cities. But anyway, Smith County clerk, I don't have anything to say about them as well as Mr. A.
So, okay, council, we have, have Katie bring them out?
Are we stuck on one?
No, I mean, we can look at a couple of those you guys want to.
Yeah, we can certainly.